...today to be sure to speak into the microphone so that we have good recording of our minutes and everything. Going to take a little personal privilege right here at the beginning to say hello to Rebecca Hines because I know that Rebecca is watching us. And for those throughout the, that are online or here with us today, we know that Rebecca has had some major surgery and has been out, but I've never received so many texts from MUSC and all over. So, we want to wish her the best and tell her that we miss her, but we're thinking about her. And Jess has done a really good job to keep up with her. And Mr. Harrington, we want to welcome you back. We've missed you for the past two months, but we know that you have had some problems yourself, but you're looking good today, very good. And I know you've been taking care of a wife, so welcome back to both of you. At this time, I'd like to call on Dr. David Mathis to do the pledge of allegiance.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd also like to welcome our audience today, those of you that have just come to spend time with us, those of you that are from organizations that are here to, to support and to make sure that we, as your State Board of Education, do the job that we have been appointed to do. So, thank you. Do we have any media here with us today? We had one stand up there on this bad day. Thank you for being with us. And you're, you're from where?
Post and Courier.
Post and Courier. Well, thank you for being there. So, welcome to all of you. At this time, is there any objection to approving the minutes as presented? Hearing none, the minutes are approved by unanimous consent. Moving right along, is there any objection to approving the agenda as presented? Hearing none, the agenda is approved by unanimous consent. At this time, I, you know, I got up this morning and, and the rain was pattering on my, my window outside, and I thought, holidays have come so quickly. The time of the year is often a period for reflection on the past and a hopeful anticipation for the new year ahead, marked by our personal growth, new beginnings, and a time spent with loved ones. It can also be a time that brings up difficult emotions for those who have experienced loss. So acknowledging both the challenges and the opportunities is very important. Thanksgiving, which we have just finished, our beautiful holiday focused on gratitude for the blessings in our life, even as it's acknowledged that not all loved ones were present, and there might be an, an empty seat at the table. It is a season for pausing to appreciate what one has, gathering with loved ones and reflecting on personal and shared blessings, sometimes called the holiday season of appreciation. Education fundamentally shapes our lives by expanding our knowledge and critical thinking abilities, which in return fosters a profound sense of gratitude for the positive changes that we can influence in the world and in others. John F. Kennedy once said, "We must find time to stop and thank the people who make a difference in our lives today." From Thanksgiving and Christmas, we learn to practice gratitude, focus on relationships, and generosity, and find reasons for hope, even during challenging times. These holidays encourage a shift in perspective from what we lack to what we have, fostering a sense of abundance, love, and connection. It's a lovely sentiment to express our gratitude for the people who have served well and are moving on to new opportunities. It is wonderful to take time to appreciate those who have contributed their time and their effort. May their next endeavors be just as successful. To our board who are finishing their four years of service, we want to thank you. We appreciate your time and your talent and your service to our educational system. Maya Slaughter, you've been a ray of sunshine with great expertise in all that you've done. Beverly Fryson, it's been a joy. In your quietness, you have given great intellect. And Dr. David Oshils is not with us today, but he has been a shining light for this board. You three have served well, and you will be missed. And today, it is my honor to present each of you with a service award for your four-year term of service to our State Board of Education. And I'm sure that they're coming forward, so Maya, if you will come. If you're in the middle, I think there's a photographer out there.
Yes.
We want to thank you for all you have given to us.
All right. Three, two, one. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Beverly Fryson, you come up. This lady reads more newspapers than anybody has ever seen. So, you have done a wonderful job. Congratulations.
Turn it the other way. That was my bad. I apologize. There you go. Just look right here. Three, two, one. Excellent. Thank you.
And we will certainly make sure that Dr. Oshils, and maybe, just maybe, he's watching today, and if he is, we want to thank him for all of the time that he has given, not only as our chair, but also for the years that he has given. And this, since this will be my last meeting as chair of the State Board of Education, I want to thank, first of all, this entire board. They have been wonderful to work with. They have been tremendously dedicated and entrenched in the work that came before them. And a lot of new work came before them this year that has not been seen by the State Board before, so we really appreciate. And to all of the staff, you all have been great in assisting us to get the information that we needed. You've got a great staff, very, and I know you know that. But you have been great to us, and we appreciate it. Of course, we could not do without our superintendent, who has always been here and listened and, and walked us through a lot of things. All of those things, I, as your former soon-to-be chair, really appreciate, and I was honored to serve. So, today, I also want to offer a prayer for Rebecca Hines, who has served the State Department and the State Board in so many ways, and I hope she's listening today. She has gone through a lot, and we really appreciate all that she has given us. So Superintendent Weaver, I'm going to turn it over to you again, probably my last time, but it's been a pleasure sitting beside you this year.
Well, Chair Lady Allison, I can't say enough gratitude. I can't express enough gratitude for your, your years of service, not just to this Board of Education, but to our state. I'm not going to date either of us by talking about how long we've known each other, but it has truly been the privilege of a lifetime working alongside of you for the benefit of our students and the betterment of our education system. So, thank you for your years of service. And it is, it's such a joy to be able to give you all the final superintendent's report of the year. We have a lot of really great things to be able to talk about. So, last month, just as a recap, we talked about our strategic compensation pilot for our teachers and the incredible gains that we're seeing in classrooms all across the state through that wonderful pilot project. And then we also talked about the encouraging growth that we're seeing on the school report cards across the state, again, in communities in every corner of South Carolina. And today, I just wanted to give you a very quick update on a couple of things. So, first of all, our Palmetto Math Project. You have heard Dr. Abby Duggins talk a lot about this. We've talked extensively about the Palmetto Literacy Project, but we're really zeroed in on math now. And if you all have not yet gotten the book, Math Mind, I highly recommend it to you. I will just be very honest with you. I grew up with a deficit mindset when it came to my ability to do math. I always said, "I'm not a math kid. I'm a reading kid." And this book is really written in a very, very accessible way for the lay audience to understand what are the strategies that we're seeing be, deliver the most promise for student outcomes. Shalini Sharma is a brilliant national thinker. She is so passionate about this topic. You can't help but walk away loving math after hearing her talk. And her vision is for every kid to be a math kid. And that is the belief mindset that we want to adopt here in South Carolina, that every single one of our students can do math. And one of the incredible resources that we have been privileged to provide to our districts at the, free of charge, is called Zern. And Zern is actually the company that Shalini has started, and she's going to be speaking over the next two days to the Instructional Leaders Roundtable up in Greenville for their big annual convening. And so, we are so excited. And what I want to share with you that Shalini has shared with us is that they have helped implement Zern in a number of states. And we were on a call with her a few weeks ago, and she said, "What is the magic in the water in South Carolina?" She said, "There is something there. There is a hunger for this work that is just incredible." And she's like, "We haven't seen an implementation go this well in any other state." And so, I just pass that along as a bit of encouragement to you, that people on the national level are sitting up and taking notice of the attitude that's happening here in South Carolina, the can-do mindset. And, and I'm just so excited to see where we go through that national interest, which I believe is actually going to allow us to implement more supports with more schools going forward. And so, that heat math that you see there, we have not required any school to adopt this. This is just a resource that we have put out there. And you see the adoption has been incredibly strong across the state, and I anticipate that that is only going to go up as Shalini is talking to the Instructional Leaders Roundtable this week. So, we are very, very excited to see that math work going forward. And one of the things that you may hear us talking about when we talk about the Palmetto Math Project is something that I'm learning. So, I'm not going to profess that I'm an expert at this, but I'm going to tell you what I've learned, is that the, the science of math, if there is such a thing, is all about what they call A or CRA, which is concrete to representational to abstract. And that is the flow of logic that we have to walk our students through. So, if you're thinking about concrete math, we think about the manipulatives that students use to actually physically count things out. And then that moves into the representational, which is, you know, fractions and decimals and all these things. And then we're moving into the more advanced theorems and more abstract math, right, of proofs and geometry and algebra equations and, and all of that. And so, that progression of CRA is what has to happen in order for our students to have that conceptual understanding and that procedural fluency in math that we know is so important for them to be that math kid that we know that they can be. So, we are so excited for this work and look forward to reporting back to you in the coming days and months about the progress that we're making in math. I also wanted to give you just a very, very high-level overview of some of my budget requests that I'll be taking to the General Assembly when they reconvene in January. Again, this is not an exhaustive list, but this is just the top tier of priorities. So, we've broken it into three buckets. The first one is teacher support. And I wanted to just call attention to the wonderful op-ed that we provided to you that ran in the Post and Courier about the incredible good news that we're seeing in terms of declining teacher vacancies. We saw a 32% year-over-year decrease from 24 to 25. When you look at 23 to 25, it's a 56% decrease in vacancies, and that's despite the fact that we're actually creating more teacher positions than we've ever had in South Carolina. And so, I attribute that to many, many different things, but we've really taken a multi-pronged strategy to teacher support here. So, of course, we've talked a lot about the state aid to classrooms, that teacher salary. Again, we're going to be pushing to get it above $50,000 this year. That is a goal that the governor and I share that we'll be taking to the General Assembly together. And so, we're very encouraged about the reception that we've had over the last few years from the General Assembly, and we want to continue to raise the teacher pay across all of the steps of the teacher pay schedule. But we also know that strategic compensation is one tool in our toolbox to help us keep the very best teachers in our classrooms of greatest need. And so, I'm going to be asking for year three of the Strategic Compensation Pilot Grant. We have just awarded year one. The General Assembly has funded year two, so we're going to be going back and asking them to fund the third year of that project. We also are going to be drawing on the work of our START Committee that we convened about a year ago. One of their big recommendations was looking at what other states like Texas and North Carolina are doing to create career progressions and pathways to, again, give our teachers room to grow professionally while staying in the classroom. If the administrative track is the right track for teachers, then more power to them. We know that great teachers can make great APs, great principals, great superintendents, et cetera. However, some teachers just want to be able to teach, and they should have a career pathway in the classroom that allows them to stay there and to continue to grow. And so, the Career Ladders Pilot that we're going to be asking the General Assembly to fund will help us create, again, an opt-in program for districts and schools that want to participate, to create mentor teachers, a defined mentor teacher, and other levels of teacher leadership within the classroom, and then compensate them accordingly for that additional expertise and responsibility that they take on. So, those are some of the big buckets of work that we're going to be pursuing this next year to, again, continue to grow that teacher pipeline and to continue to reduce vacancies across the state. And we also know, research from SE Teacher tells us that the greatest factor driving teachers out of the classroom oftentimes is student behavior. And so, we know that we have seen encouraging progress with the cellphone policy, but we know that that's only a first step and that there's a lot more work to do. And so, that's something that we will be working to engage you all as members of the State Board, members of the General Assembly, in that larger conversation around how we really can come alongside our teachers in enforcing and supporting classroom discipline so that, again, we can keep those great teachers in the classroom. The next category of expenditures falls under safe schools. So, over the last three years, we have requested and received, and this board has approved $20 million each year for school safety improvements. Every district who has applied for that grant has received some amount of money, although each year, the demand for that school safety money far exceeds the $20 million that was appropriated. And so, we are going to roll that request along with a request to create a State Education Infrastructure Bank into our budget request this year. We know that there are huge needs, especially in our rural communities that oftentimes do not have the index of taxpaying ability, to fund the capital improvements that are needed for their schools. We also know that our growing charter school sector does not currently have access to any state funding for facilities or for transportation. And so, this Education Infrastructure Bank would be a reliable, needs-based way to answer both of those, as well as to have a dedicated pot of money that would be devoted to continuing to increase school safety, because we know that if our students aren't safe, nothing else matters. We're also going to be asking for a smaller amount of money, but an important sum nonetheless, to start a pilot program here in South Carolina that is based loosely on what Florida did in response to the Parkland shooting. So, Florida has invested in SROs just like South Carolina, and this in no way is meant to diminish or supplant the SRO priority and funding here in the state. But what this is meant to do is to find a willing local law enforcement or state law enforcement agency who is willing to create a training program that school employees who are not law enforcement personnel could volunteer to go through. No one would be forced to go through this. This would be a entirely coalition of the willing type of project. But I think that what this could also do, in addition to creating additional hands-on-deck in an emergency situation in our public schools, we also could potentially give our private schools access for them to pay to access this kind of training, because we know that two of the school shootings that we have seen recently, one in Nashville and one in Minneapolis, happened at private schools. And those private schools don't have access to public funds for SROs, but yet those children are still valuable and oftentimes vulnerable. And so, I think this would be a great way for the state to provide a resource for those schools to be able to pay to access. And then, of course, we've talked for years, and I won't belabor this point, about how important it is for us to keep our school bus replacement cycle on target. The General Assembly has answered that cry, and so, we are going to continue to make that request to them to allow us to stay on that 15-year replacement cycle. The final bucket of funding falls under student success, and there are several things I wanted to highlight here. The first being an expansion of summer reading camps that is contemplated under the Read to Succeed 2.0 law. We know that waiting to intervene until third grade was never the intent of the law. We need to be catching kids in second grade and in first grade when we know that they're struggling readers, so that by the time they reach that third-grade retention gateway, they have already received the intervention that they need to make sure that they can get promoted on to fourth grade. And so, this would just continue to expand that and fund that summer reading camp mandate in the Read to Succeed 2.0 legislation. Each year, we're asking for funds for high-quality instructional materials. We don't have a major statewide adoption this fiscal year, because we have, just as you'll recall, done our ELA adoption and our math adoption. However, we do have consumable textbooks that we purchase on a regular basis. Think about like cursive writing books or science lab books and things that get consumed every year that we have to purchase. And then, we're also asking the General Assembly to go ahead and pre-fund some of the money that we're going to need in two years for the adoption of new social studies materials as we rewrite the social studies standards this coming year. And then, the final thing in the student success bucket that I wanted to highlight was what we're calling disconnect to reconnect. And we've already talked a lot about the behavioral and mental health challenges that we know our students are facing in, as it relates to our school cellphone policy, free-to-focus. But we know that the issue of screens is much larger than just the question of whether or not a student has a cellphone during the school day. And I meant to bring it down with me, and of course, I walked out of my office without it. I'll be glad to show it to you if you all are interested. There's a wonderful curriculum called Screen Strong that was developed by a mother who was a nurse, whose son actually, thankfully, is on the other side of a video gaming addiction. But what their family went through, what he went through, is something that I think a lot of families out there can relate to when it comes to technology overuse. And I'll just tell you, you know, in talking with early childhood teachers around the state, I hear over and over again that we have students coming to school without gross motor skills, fine motor skills, some of them not even potty-trained. And these children have been handed a screen almost from birth and been swiping on a screen. We have conducted a wholesale technological experiment on an entire generation of students, and we are paying the price for that in our classrooms every single day. And so, I think parent education is a huge piece of this, but it's not just parent education, it's student education, because students can understand this brain science of this addiction that we have been fostering as a society through technology if it's explained to them. And these materials are so engaging, so just well-done. I think it's going to be a real game changer here for not only our schools, but for the larger conversation that we need to have with our families around technology use and, frankly, overuse in our students. The last thing that I wanted to highlight for you all was just that we had a wonderful time at the Foundation for Excellence in Education, their annual conference. There were just some phenomenal general sessions, and I'll provide the QR code to you to look those up afterwards. But we had Dr. Angela Duckworth, who wrote the book Grit, and I actually was privileged to moderate. She did a keynote panel, and I was able to moderate her Q and A after that. And she actually is conducting research on the implementation of our phone policy here in South Carolina, so we're very, very excited about that connection. Admiral William McCraven, you may have heard of his graduate speech a few years ago where he talked about making your bed, the importance of making your bed. Well, he has a new book out on crisis leadership, and he talked, just an incredible talk that I'd recommend to you there, Dr. Emily Oster and so many other people. So, those sessions are all available at that QR code. And again, our free-to-focus work here in South Carolina was highlighted multiple times on that national stage. They had over 1,500 people there, about 22 of my fellow state chiefs were there. So, this was just an incredible opportunity for networking, for learning from each other what's working. And of course, I'm always so proud to represent the incredible work that is happening here in South Carolina. And none of that work would be possible without the strong support of the members of this State Board. So, I just want to say, in this season of gratitude, in addition to my gratefulness for you, Ms. Rita, I'm so thankful for each of the members of the board and for the commitment that you bring to this work every single day. So, with that, I'll return the floor to you. Thank you. Great report.
Wonderful things happening in South Carolina, and we're thankful to all those people who are out there digging the trenches to make sure that it happens. At this time, we're going into our public comment. Typically, the State Board allows five minutes for your comments, and I know that Dr. Mathis will keep the, the time on. We want to welcome Deana R. Cruz. Deana is with the South Carolina Education Association. Welcome.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
I know y'all just had lunch. My name is Deana Renee Cruz. I come before you today as a 25-year elementary education veteran. I spent the last 11 years as the Read to Succeed literacy coach in Florence One Schools. And I currently have the honor of being on a leave of absence to serve as president of the South Carolina Education Association. We are the affiliate of the largest professional association of educators in this country. I appreciate this role, given the significance of the SCEA, which has been advocating for public education in South Carolina since 1881. Our organization has contributed significantly to many of the benefits and supports that educators and students enjoy today, many of which are supported by the State Board of Education. I wanted to take this moment to introduce myself and express my gratitude for your service in this role, working to improve the lives of our children, our families, and our educators. On behalf of the SCEA, I hope to collaborate with you to address the needs we've been hearing from our educators. In particular, and I've heard some of those issues mentioned today, school safety, behavior, and discipline. In addition to, as I heard this morning, the barrier that Praxis has on many of our educators who want to be certified teachers. I am personally committed to early childhood literacy and for our great state to expand upon that. So, coming in March, look out for some good works that we'll be doing for Read Across America. As I close, please do not hesitate to contact me as we work together for each and every South Carolina child attending public schools, as well as the dedicated professionals who educate them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz. Then we have Felicia Jones, humanitarian with Kids and Neighborhood Empowerment Connections. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I've been speaking to your Richland County II School Board, Richland County I, your city council. I met with Senator Tamika Devine, as well as your Chamber of Commerce in Columbia. So, I'm asking on behalf of the kids who have no voice, first of all, I need to say this, as a humanitarian, I'm an international peace ambassador too, Unification Federation New Jersey. Larry King gave me my second humanitarian award in California. So, I'm speaking for kids on the East Coast. So I'm speaking for kids on the East Coast, as well as the West Coast at the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation in New Jersey through Virtual Health, if you want to track me, who I am. So today, I'm speaking for the youth who have no voice, because we hold these truths to be self-evident. We cannot get up, go to the school, to the mall, to church, to any facility, sometimes just walk out your house without possibly dodging a bullet or eating, drinking, and breathing poison. So I'm speaking for, first, the class action lawsuit. We just settled with Scout Motors for $1.29 billion. I hope you're all aware of that. In South Carolina, I'm asking the school board, all those peoples, entities I just mentioned, I spoke to them and asked to use that $1.29 billion to run its speed line from Savannah Airport to Charlotte, Charleston to Atlanta, which impacts the environment, which is what it's supposed to be used for. And yes, I did go to the Tri-Date College Department of Transportation November the 2nd, asking them to do this. Okay? So we want to use creative, innovative protection, meaning we don't want to only leave poison here for the next generation. You want to leave them some jobs. That rail line creates jobs for rural communities, as well as the city through Savannah, Charlotte, Charleston to Atlanta. Okay? So all the students in those rural communities have access to jobs, as well as coming to Columbia or wherever they want to go for a higher education. That's my first topic. Second, when you was talking about safety, I asked the Richland County School Board to ask the government, who wants to have their foot in our business, to use their drones to monitor schools. I asked them last January. I said, "A bad situation happened." I was in Harbison when that four-year-old killed theirselves, asking why is it safer in the prison yard than in the schoolyard? Well, that's why. A four-year-old shouldn't have a gun. That's called neglecting abuse. Okay? So with that being said, I'm asking you to use, to reach out to the government for those drones. They detect human trafficking as well as gun violence. And here in Orangeburg, as well as Beaufort, two months ago, you had two mass shootings, okay, in South Carolina. So the third thing I asked for, the class action lawsuit due to environmental pollution. Ford Jackson just sued DuPont for PFAS in the water. If it's in their water, it's in everyone's. I took water testing kits to the school board. Also, we have a $1.29 billion settlement from Scout Motors. Also, we still have 22 active environmental cases, and we have been suing for environmental pollution prior to. At this point, every human being has enough plastic on your brain to make a spoon due to environmental pollution, okay? There's a 92% increase in dementia, ADHD. So it's ADHD for every student or human being in the United States, just not South Carolina, but I'm starting here. Okay? That means the younger you are, the more detrimental your mental development is, okay? There's also a 370% spike in dementia for millennials and Gen C. These statistics are CDC, Blue Cross and Blue Shield, National Institute of Health. So I'm doing this because I kept wondering why is stuff just going on the way it's going on, and nobody's saying anything. You can't have your doctorate, your PhD, your master's, and not have humanity, okay? You cannot turn your head while our kids are dodging bullets. You cannot put barriers, you must put barriers in place, I'm sorry, like the drones, as well as if you operate heavy equipment, you cannot carry, you cannot drive, or what is it? You cannot drive. So I also need you to incorporate in that, you cannot purchase or carry a weapon. I don't need an ADHD person outside with a gun while letting a four-year-old have it, okay? While I'm shopping for Christmas Eve, and that's what happened in Harbison. So next, I ask for $10,000 a month for life due to environmental pollution, free mental medical counseling or personal assistant in higher education. That actually ends homelessness, okay? When you do the math, you're going to uplift society with this class action lawsuit. We're also going to have to do a semi-shut down like COVID, so we can start seeing our error and things clean up again. So we know that it's possible because we saw it. But if you keep turning your head and not paying attention, we're not going to be a successful society.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
So I did leave some paperwork, and I will forward it. Thank you.
Thank you. Be sure and give it to someone at the desk, Jess.
I sent it through your email.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Ms. Jones. We now move into our State Board of Education committees, beginning with our Policy and Legislative Committee report. We met and had one item for approval and none for information. The report stands as a motion made from the committee, the request for approval of local school board meeting livestream policy, and it was given to us by our general counsel, Todd Atwater. It does not require a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, likewise. Motion carries. We now move to Education Professions Committee report. I recognize Dr. Johnson.
This morning, the Education Professions Committee met and heard two items for approval. First, we were given names of folks that have been recommended to join the Professional Review Committee, and those are people that represent the colleges and universities, higher ed here in our state, which review items before it comes to us for its education value and so forth. And the second item was the University of South Carolina Aiken is asking for a very unique clinical placement for one of its students in Japan. The student is a military wife, and her husband will be based in Japan, and she wishes to do her student teaching there on the base. Her college, University of South Carolina, has met with folks, and they have assured that she meets all the criteria and has the same type program that she would have if she were here in our country. Then there were several items for information that we heard this morning. First was, again, about the updates from the Professional Review Committee. They refer to that as the PRC Committee, some provider and program updates we heard about. And then we had several other items that we were told about. One was the educator evaluation results for 2024-25, which was very interesting for us to understand. Our teachers and principals are evaluated each year, and how well they do and how many are each year being evaluated, and how that relates to our student success, which, of course, is the most important part. The data that has been gathered from that will be used to improve our teacher and principal evaluation in the future. Those first two items were moved to the current agenda, consent agenda, and that's it.
Okay, you've heard the report, and that stands as a motion from the committee. It does not require a second. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, likewise. Motion carries. We now hear from Standards, Learning, and Accountability Committee, Ms. Lynn.
Good afternoon. Our committee met, the Standards, Learning, and Accountability Committee, we did meet today. We heard two items, the Read to Succeed Implementation Guidelines for Endorsement and Course Approval Guidance Document. Dr. Green did a great job at presenting that information. We talked about the timelines and just updating some of the things that needed to be updated in those guidelines. And the second thing, the second item we heard was a report of recommendations from their Instructional Materials Advisory Committee for the 2026 adoption cycle. Again, Ms. Baker did, Barker did a great job at that, and she also talked about just the committees and the things that were going on. So in the cycle, we looked at the timeline, and we were on track. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn. The report stands as a motion made from the committee. It does not require a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, likewise. Our Instructional Materials Review Committee report.
The IMRC has not had anything referred to it for several months. In fact, if we keep going like this, it won't be long, and I'll forget how to run a meeting.
Oh, I doubt that. I doubt that, but that means that our districts are moving right along. Now we move to our Educator-Licensor Committee report. I recognize Mrs. Kreminger to present that report.
Thank you, Chair Allison. The Educator-Licensor Committee heard nine total cases today. We approved one initial certification. We approved seven suspensions and one revocation. Those matters were ratified by the full board. And a special thank you to Mr. Gunter and Ms. Berg for everything you do to present us that information in a timely manner, and we're excited to welcome Mackenzie Seegers, who will be on board with Mr. Gunter from now on. And I also want to thank Ms. Slauter for the work you have done. You're going to be missed. And Dr. Shields for the work he did on this committee this year. Thank you. And that's my report.
Thank you, Ms. Kreminger. The full board Educator-Licensor Committee met and heard four cases, resulting in one denial for initial certification, two on orders of suspension, and one on orders of permanent revocation or permanent voluntary surrender. This was permanent revocation. Additionally, the full board ratified all actions taken by our ELC committee. At this time, we are going to hear from our Nomination Committee, our chair, Dr. Mathis will give that report.
Thank you, Ms. Allison. The Nominations Committee met via phone call on November 20th, and we have for recommendation for chair-elect. Therefore, it is a recommendation of the committee to present Joyce Kreminger's name as a nominee for State Board of Education Chair-elect for 2026.
You have a nomination from the committee for chair-elect. Are there any other recommendations from this floor? If not, I will entertain a motion. Motion made. Need no seconds, since this came from a committee, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, likewise. Congratulations, Ms. Kreminger. And at this time, it gives me great honor and appreciation to swear in your chair for the coming year.
You will stand. Raise your right hand, put your left over your heart. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, and your name.
Aye, David Mathis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the duties and laws.
That I will uphold the duties and laws.
Of the state of South Carolina.
Of the state of South Carolina.
Based on the statutes governing.
Based on the statutes governing.
Operations of the South Carolina State Board of Education.
Operations of the South Carolina State Board of Education.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. And so I swear in our chair-elect. You'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Joyce Kreminger.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold.
That I will uphold.
The duties and laws.
The duties and laws.
Of the state of South Carolina.
Of the state of South Carolina.
Based on statutes.
Based on the statutes.
Governing operations.
Governing operations.
Of the South Carolina State Board of Education.
Of the South Carolina State Board of Education.
As my first official duty as chair of the state board, Ms. Allison, I'd like to thank you for your leadership. I'd like to thank you for your leadership as chair of the state board for the past year. I think I speak for this whole board, and I know the staff here at the department. You are probably one of the, you're probably the greatest ambassador for education in South Carolina. We appreciate your passion that you have shown through the years in the General Assembly and your passion for the students in South Carolina as your time on the state board. So thank you, and we have something for you. And a photo op, too.
That's always.
How beautiful.
So now you can gather people in the order wherever you are.
That is great. That is beautiful. Thank you so much.
All right. You look right here. Three, two, one. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just hope I can follow in your footsteps, knowing how to run a great meeting, so thank you very much. So the consent agenda has been distributed. Is there a motion to approve?
Kreminger, so move.
Okay, a motion by Board Member Kreminger. Is there a second?
Second, Johnson.
Second by Johnson. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by a like sign. The motion carries. And then we have, for information, an academic update for, I'm looking for Dr. Duggins and Lila.
You've got a substitute teacher.
Great, great.
So, good afternoon. I'm Lila Toll-Monsager. I'm our executive director for talent and continuous improvement, and I'm subbing in for Deputy Dr. Abby Duggins, who is on the road up to Greenville to meet with the instructional leaders and the personnel leaders. And when she saw the state board was going to be a little bit late, she asked me to step in and give this update. So thank you for the time. This month, we wanted to highlight, you heard some about our high-quality instructional materials and about our problematometaph project earlier today. We wanted to highlight some of our other professional learning in our agency that is aligned with those things, because clarity and alignment and focus have been our real focus for the past year, and so we want to show you how some of the other pieces fit together. So the two offices will highlight our professional learning from the Office of Assessment and Standards and the Office of Leadership Effectiveness. So to start with, both of these offices, professional learning is really highlighted by goals to ensure that we promote instructional coherence and rigor in our instruction across districts and across schools within a district. It's also our goal that we want to build educator capacity to use those standards-aligned high-quality instructional materials in English and math. We also want to make sure that we support access to professional learning through flexible formats. So it's not always easy for a teacher who has taught a full day to run down to Columbia for an afternoon PD, so we want to make sure that our professional learning is accessible. So as some examples from the Office of Assessments and Standards, first, we want to highlight professional learning in mathematics. Our geometry with statistics is a different course than we've ever offered in South Carolina. We used to do Euclidean geometry, and now we're moving back to geometry with statistics. These trainings have been offered across districts and within districts in South Carolina, really focusing on mathematical discourse and using the new geometry materials to help teachers understand those courses. It actually emphasizes both those concrete and representational strategies to make sure that our geometry teachers understand how to teach this new geometry. We've gotten great feedback on that. We also have a whole menu of math professional learning that's based on feedback from districts K-12 and what specific courses or specific concepts they want to see, and that is on demand. We have a request form that our math team fulfills and then heads out to give that professional learning. And then finally, there are office hours for our math teachers in South Carolina. There's monthly math support sessions, and these are driven by frequently asked questions in those trainings, that then the answers are presented and available and recorded so that even if folks can't log in, they can go back and watch those sessions. Although we are really emphasizing math this year because we have work to do in math, we are not taking our foot off the gas with English. We continue to provide professional learning around the implementation of those English standards and those high-quality instructional materials. And we are starting, hopefully, in January or February, specific cohorts for those selected materials. So different districts have selected a different publisher for your 6-8 English or your high school English sequence. And so getting together the districts that picked the similar materials and having teachers learn from each other about how those materials fit the standards and the best way to sequence them. So we're excited to roll that out next semester. Finally, Finally, I'll end with the Office of Leadership Effectiveness. You'll hear in these updates that same alignment to rigorous instruction and making sure we're being flexible to fit the needs of the field. So I'll start with our targeted support and improvement schools, who are targeted for support because they have a subgroup that is underperforming. We went out and surveyed the leaders in those newly identified schools, talked to them in those original sessions about what topics they wanted to share. And instead of just getting professional learning from that transformation team, they pulled together resources from across the agency to have five sessions this fall. Those included using your multi-tiered systems of support, collaborating with our Office of Instructional Supports there, fostering collaborative planning with your teachers using your high-quality instructional materials, which included staff from the Leadership, Transformation, and Instructional Materials teams, increasing the collaboration between special education and general education teachers with our Office of Special Education Services, using student learning objectives as a growth model and continuous improvement model, which included our subgroup team and effectiveness teams. And then finally, alternatives to exclusionary discipline and how to really be inclusive of your students with behavioral needs and special education needs. And that was co-presented with our Behavioral and Academic Alliances that partner with our Office of Special Education Supports. So we hope you can hear through these updates that we are working not just to align our big-ticket professional learning initiatives, but those across the agency to make sure they're focused on student outcomes. We hope that the impact of this will be high-quality, standards-aligned, and more importantly, sustainable professional learning that will increase improvement across South Carolina schools. Thank you for your time, and happy to take any questions you have.
Are there any questions for Lila?
I have one question, please.
Yes, sir.
You said that you have several different textbooks in different schools. How does, do they just randomly select these, or are they recommended by y'all?
That's a great, that's a great question. They're actually approved by you and recommended by a committee of educators and practitioners that go through the State Board process, and districts can only select off of that approved list. And as those lists get tougher and those rubrics get tougher, there are a lot fewer choices for districts, specifically in English and math. The bottle has gotten very narrow through which they have to pass.
And Mr. Harrington, I'll just, I'll just add that the great work that Abby and Lila and before Abby, Dr. Ferguson, did to really look at it through a lens of rigor and quality, it had always been a much more wide-open aperture, let's put it that way, previously. And so we've really worked very hard as a department to ensure that the list, the final list that we bring you, has been vetted for quality as well as alignment to the standards.
And that's why we can do cohorts with, that are curriculum-specific, because we have so few providers now.
And I'll add that it's not the state saying, here, take this. Then it comes down to the district, then the district gets to decide, then teachers get to look at materials, they generate rubrics, there's lots of discussions. I came to Columbia to this, where everybody, they, all of the instructional, high-quality instructional material representatives were there, and it was very competitive. And so you sit through that, and I think even the state had different caravans around the state, so if you couldn't come to Columbia to look at everything, you could go to, I think Coker was the site, you could go over to Coker and you could look at the books. So then the districts get to decide. Then it falls down to the districts, it falls down to teachers, and then teachers are scoring and doing all of that, and the decisions are made, and then they go through the district and back up to the state for that district. So it is a, it is an amazing process, and people will still complain about it. So I'm just saying. But if you, you know, it's a great process.
Lila, I think this process is wonderful. How does and does this align with higher ed?
That is such a great question. And actually, my counterpart, Dr. Alana Prosser, was at the PD Consortium maybe two months ago, and she was presenting on high-quality instructional materials. And one of the conversations that started up with Lander and Frances Marion, who were there, are how do we get these high-quality instructional materials into our ed prep programs, and how do we teach teachers who are being prepared to use the curriculum that's adopted? And so that's definitely something that's on our radar, so stay tuned. That's a really important step.
Thank you. Any other questions for Lila? We don't need to let her off the hook very easy.
Thanks, Dr. Mathis.
Thank you, Lila. Appreciate all that good information. Now, in other business, do any of our board members have anything to share for the good of the order?
I have been instructed to warn you all that at 6:30 tonight, if you are not at the unveiling of the African-American history calendar at R2I2, this may self-destruct. So Dr. Dwayne Gadsden just said, for the good of the order, I wanted to pass that along. But the unveiling, official unveiling of this tonight is at 5:30. We'll have a reception. We'll have student food and music provided, and then the formal ceremony will start at 6:30. So if you're able to join us, please do.
Thank you, Superintendent Weaver. And that's always a highlight, unveiling that calendar. So it's a lot of hard work that goes into that. Thank you for that. Any other business for the good of the order? Well, hearing none, do I have a recommendation or a motion for us to adjourn?
In honor of Mr. Ken Richardson, who's not here? I so move.
Okay, so Cliff Warren, is there a second? Second by Joey. Official adjourn. Thank you.